Sherry, if you'll unmute yourself and then stay present.
Yes.
Thank you.
Present. I can't hear though.
Mr. Bryant. Dr. Kraft.
Um, yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Torres. Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade. Dr. Kraft.
Um, I cannot hear anything, so I don't know what I'm saying yes to.
Sherry, it's for the approval of the proposed agenda.
Okay, yeah, yes.
Is there, are there any participants in the Zoom meeting that would like to provide public comment? If you would, then please raise your hand or I'll open the chat and just put a note in the chat. No, no hands raised.
So we just have a couple of seconds and then please keep in mind that there's another opportunity towards the end of the.
And Dr. Kraft for the consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay, we're working on the volume, okay?
Sure, thanks.
Dr. Baptist, they're ready for your presentation or your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson. At the meeting last week, I shared with you the recommendations for policy revisions and for policies that just needed to be reviewed for a five-year cycle. I was, I was asked to make revisions to a couple of policies. One was EFB. I had Ms. Powell and Mr. Jones to also work on this, so there have been some revisions made in that policy that I bring back tonight. Also, Ms. McKeever and Ms. Bryson Morseburger had shared with me some language that had been previously suggested for Policy KNAJ. I have added those changes in, and those are really the only two policies that I've made any changes in since we met last time. I did include in the package for this week, the wellness policy one more time because there had been conversation about adding the word, the goal of 200 minutes, and so I wanted to make sure that the community saw that that was still in there and nothing about that has been changed. So I would welcome any questions that anyone may have about these three policies or any of the other policies that I presented last week. I would ask too that the board approve these policies. Mr. Henderson and I have discussed the policies and the recommendations that come before you tonight to go ahead and if you, if it's your pleasure to approve these policies and then I will get all of them set with the correct formatting so that we will have them in place hopefully by July 1.
Thank you, Dr. Baptist. I was, um, go ahead. I appreciate the change to KNA. Just to clarify, was that we went to our attorney to ensure that that was relevant? And was that okay with our attorney?
I have not taken that to the attorney. I can certainly do that with what you had and looking at the change in program that we have, it seems definitely appropriate. And I had no problem with the language that was in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
More than comfortable with that language. I just wanted to make sure.
It made perfect sense to me, Ms. McKeever.
Um, so I would like to move that we approve the policies as written, but as amended by Dr. Baptist, except for the wellness policy at this time. That we return to, well, let me talk about the wellness policy after, is there a second? So I was thinking that the wellness policy, we can go back, the, can be returned to the SHAB for further procedural input and then return to the school board as soon as possible thereafter for review and approval. Any further discussions, questions, board members? It's free.
Is there any implication for deferring? I understand why you want to defer, but Dr. Baptist just said something about July 1. By deferring, we will not be taking action on it until after the first. What implications does that have for the division?
Um, my understanding is that the legal requirements for the wellness policy have not changed and July 1 is not, uh, there's no new law that needs to be incorporated into the policy. It's just a change on the administrative level. So the wellness policy in the past has been approved outside of the normal proceed policy process. So I believe that this is a appropriate, that we can defer it just for a little while to make sure that it is what the community and advisory board suggests.
So will we be approving this policy at our September meeting?
I think their first meeting is the, probably the first Monday or Tuesday of September, so it might not be until later September or early October. Any other questions, concerns? Dr. Baptist, am I right about all of that? I don't, I don't mean to interject when you are clearly expert on all of that.
Um, you're correct. The policy that is in place is within the last five years, so it would, does not have to be reviewed. My thought on it though is the proposed policy has much more comprehensive language in it than what is currently there. So the longer we wait to pass the policy, the less comprehensive policy we have in that area. It's my understanding that the real concern with SHAB and especially Ms. Bennett is not necessarily the language in the policy, but the ability of SHAB to be the group who has approval process or veto process on any change in regulations. So it's more the regulation that has been the concern than the actual policy. And it would be still up to the, the board to consider whether the change in how regulations are presented would occur or not. I did share a policy with a board member this afternoon that indicates the, our, the school board policy on how regulations and policies are passed. But I haven't gotten a concern that the actual wellness policy was the issue, but how regulations could be changed, whether it was the responsibility of the superintendent, which is the current policy that we have and the, the way that all of our other policies are done in regulations, or if SHAB would have approval or veto power of changing anything. Again, Mr. Henderson and I have talked about the policy and it's his recommendation as is mine that the, the policy be passed so we can have the policy in place for the school board. We can wait and change regulations if necessary. I am not hearing anything, so I don't know whether anybody in the board is speaking and the other folks on Zoom also are not hearing anything. So if there are any questions or other comments, we're not hearing them.
Thank you, Beth. All right, I do want to just extend my gratitude to all advisory committees and the work that you do. I want to always express.
Mr. Dura has muted, so we're not hearing it again.
Now I've kind of done it and.
Now we can hear.
My, so, okay, basically, Dr. Baptist, I just was expressing my gratitude to all advisory committees and any and all parents who have provided feedback and communicated to us what their wishes are right now, especially seeing as school is out. And so we do appreciate that you were, you know, sharing with us what you would like. I think Ms. McKeever has made a motion. There was a second to it. Mr. Henderson did make comment to the fact that we're okay with pulling the wellness policy and allowing SHAB to have the opportunity to meet again in September and review and discuss this together face to face. So if there's no further discussion from board members, then Madam Clerk, will you please take a vote on this?
It's Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant, Ms. Bryson Morseburger.
Yes.
Dr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor, Dr. Baptist.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have the approval of our return to learn virtual options for the 2021-2022 school year as presented last week by Dr. Odie.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Mr. Henderson. Last week, again, we did, staff did present the Fall 2021 reopening plan to include the five days, ten person instruction that school divisions are required to offer to all students by, as cited in Senate Bill 1303. Staff also presented a limited CCS virtual plan. It's three through eight, that virtual for grade through 12. Tonight, the superintendent recommends that the board take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Odie. Are there any questions, board members of the proposed plan?
Yeah, I just, um, Deshawn, the student rep, he really felt strongly about more virtual options or, and I just wanted to know, know, were we able to address part of his, or any of his concerns? I know that we have, you know, CCS virtual and Virginia virtual. And if that is sufficient as to address students like his concerns.
Specifically that pre-K two, that is in-person only.
We do have virtual options in the high school. Of course, Dr. Iraziri shared what his plan was. And we do have virtual Virginia as an option for courses that students would like to take. Uh, we, we did hear Jasan's concerns and desire. And so we, that's why we do have that as an option in the event that students such as Jasan are interested in moving in that.
Still has some concerns.
Yeah, I think Dr. Odie, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think his concerns were if he had a younger, or if someone has a younger sibling in the home and say an older student, say at the high school level, had that option to attend virtually and they were responsible for caring for a younger sibling who, who might also want that option to attend virtually, but we aren't offering that. So I think that was.
Right, it is, it is, oh, I'm so sorry. It is of course our goal to bring all of our students back in person face to face. So we did not offer a K through two option at this point because, as I shared last week, we realized that students, our youngest students learn best in person. We do realize that there are students as low as kindergarten and first grade who were successful virtual learners. We, we do acknowledge that, but we have to also acknowledge that we realize that students that are learning their foundational skills, reading and writing, holding a pencil, having the teacher read, be able to see their mouth and then be able to see the teacher's mouth is so important for our foundational learners. So we did not offer a K through two option at this time.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I think that's not necessarily in debate, but, you know, I think there are, there may be situations where, you know, a family or two or three or four, for whatever reason, are not comfortable, you know, having their young child, especially if we're, you know, looking at the possibility of our, those youngest learners not having protection from vaccinations if they choose to have that, or even if vaccines are available, maybe there is that hesitancy for them to not take the vaccine. So, you know, we, we still want to be able to address the educational needs of students that might fall into that. And I don't know how many there may be, but it sounds like from Mr. Johnson that, that he had a strong sense that, that there may be students who need that option. And so I guess we were hoping that we might have, you know, the opportunity for staff to look at whether or not we can meet those needs.
One thing we do have to remember is that because we are legally required to, to bring students back in five days a week, we anticipate that we're going to have a large number of our students that are returning to in-person learning. And so staffing is, is an issue there. And so if we do have two or three primary grade students who are interested in virtual learning, then we'd have to think about what staffing would look like for that, when we have to have teachers in the building to teach those students that are in person. So we would not pull a teacher to teach two or three students that are virtual.
Right. I think we all understand that, but I guess I, the fact that we're not even opening it up to that age group is concerning to me. I mean, we don't know how many, if, if we're not allowing families with students at, at those ages to at least say, hey, I, I'm one of those families who, who has a young child. So if we don't know or if we don't offer it, anyway, that's my opinion.
I'm, I'm not saying that there has to be a, a answer to it because I certainly understand the, the critical need of, you know, young children have to be, you know, for those fundamentals, learning that they have to be on site. It sounds like we just may have to see if they're, they're to, a lot of students like that, we may have to come up with a solution about it. I think now we may be able to address that specific concern.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Our responsibility as a school division is to serve our families. That's our utmost responsibility. The plan we put in front of you is some guidelines to give you where we need to move forward. We know that we've been doing the, the grades three through eight relatively well, and we know those students, many, some of them have a good opportunity and do well in a virtual setting, grades nine through 12. We have many of our high school kids have been doing virtual Virginia and some of them have selected our CCS model that we've been using at, at CHS for a while. I think we would take every applicant, a case by case situation, if there were some young learners, grades K through 12, that they, because of the situation that they're in or because of, of concerns, then we will definitely address that and try to serve them. So for us to, we have a plan, we're moving forward with, this is guidelines. Folks, we're, this is the first, we've done this. It's going to be, we're not out of, of bringing everything back to normalcy, so we're trying to move forward in that direction. But we know that we'll have some students, grades two, second, that parents feel that they're, that they need to keep their child at home. We will meet their needs and we'll figure it out. And if it becomes a, an issue with staffing, we'll come back and, and look at, come to you for additional funding. So here, what, what we gave you is a framework of moving forward. We have an application that, that any parent can complete and will review the success of their students and, and listen to, to their needs. As I said, is that our goal is, we serve our community and we'll do what we can to do that.
Ms. Perrier.
Madam Chair, I too was concerned about Mr. Wade's issue, but having been involved with this division long before being on the school board, I think that if we have particular concerns, if families have particular concerns, they have always been addressed and to the best of the division's ability, accommodations have been made. And so if those issues present themselves in the fall, I feel comfortable that Dr. Odie and her team in conjunction with Mr. Henderson will make the necessary accommodations for any families that may fall into that.
Yeah, just quickly back here, because I don't know how to signal anybody. But I think with Mr. Henderson's clarification and knowing that we, we will make efforts to, to adapt and adjust if there are needs that arise, then that, to me, that would be enough for me to support the, the plan as presented.
I was just going to ask, just to say, I appreciate the flexibility because that is an ongoing concern for some families in the community still with younger children. I was just wondering if we can add it somewhere in that application process. It just says that if your learner is, you know, K through two and you need, you know, you're interested in this or you need an accommodation due to COVID, just so that it's out there so that they can know to email and to ask, because you, if you're not watching this meeting, you might not know that it's an option to ask about it.
I can appreciate that.
I'm, I move that we adopt the proposed return to learn recommendation from staff.
Okay. Any further discussion? I, I hope that the, you know, I think you all have heard that, I think Ms. Bryson Morseburger's comment is well taken and, yeah. I assume we will see that in places, like let us know if you need additional virtual support. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, if you'll take a vote on that, please.
It's Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger.
Yes.
Dr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier.
Yeah.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Odie. Um, all right, we are moving on now to, um, our leadership profile presentation from Hazard, Young and Atiya and Associates regarding our superintendent search. So if everybody, everybody will please welcome Brad and Ann who have been diligently working, um, this from the get-go, but especially this last week on, um, opportunities and forums and community outreach. So thank you both for being here with us tonight.
You, and we're glad to be back. Uh, we had a great week here, engaged and Ann did it virtually and I did some of the days live, but we had a very, very busy week and met a lot of different people in Charlotteville City and school system. So we were very, very pleased to present the report tonight. We have given you a 34-page single-spaced report. We're not going to go our way through that. Instead, we took the highlights of that in the online survey and turned it into 13 PowerPoint slides. And one of them is the title page. So we really have 12 slides to talk about. Um, but I want to first thank and we'll thank her again at the end. Liz, we've actually did a great job setting this all up for us, uh, managing on the flow and fitting people in when we need to fit in. And we're very, very pleased and we think it went very well. This is an important part of the process because it's when we engage with your community to find out what we need to know, but also probably it's a good mirror and lens for you as board members and as our community to look at what people are saying because it's, it's a nice thing to get almost a survey of where your community is. And so, um, the stacker, if you could go to the second slide, it talks about engagement stakeholders. Uh, this is our participatory delineation of who participated. Board of Education members got seven individual interviews. And then we saw 65 administrators either in group settings or individually, and that's a very large proportion for individually. So we thought that was a very good representation. Teachers were small, but if you go to the next column, over 25% of your teachers responded to the online survey. So we, we find that is a very high response rate. We normally don't see that high response rate on the online survey from teachers. So that I think is very good. And by the way, in those nine teachers, some of them are representing larger groups. For instance, I met with, uh, a rep at the high school who had brought the entire high school faculty's concerns and comments to, uh, the meeting with me. Support staff, 15, uh, in-person students. It was the last day of school. We had some juxtaposition there. So we sat patiently waiting for that first student to zoom in and we just, like the Maytag repairman, it never happened, but you have to be very old to understand that joke. I'm sorry. Uh, and then 16 parents, but 88 did respond online and 67 students responded online, which is a very good response again. So we, we feel and, and we've gone through their responses. And I think you as board members can see that too. Community members, 22 and 27 respectively. Grand total of in-person, 134. That number is actually much higher. Ann Monday is the cleanup person here and she has been engaging throughout the last couple of days with people who didn't get a chance to meet us in person. We're on Zoom those last days. So Ms. Becker and Ms. Monday have been working together. And I think we're narrowing that down, but I know that number is much higher, but we'll leave it at 134 and you can note that it's probably more like 140, 150 or something like that. 347 on your online response. We, uh, had the principals push out a message and we got a good response after that. And then again, I'm very pleased with the teachers, 481 responses altogether. So in this 34-page report, you'll see responses by teachers, by administrators, by board members. And it's along those same three questions of what are the overall strengths, what are the overall concerns and what are the characteristics needed in new superintendent? But I'm going to let Ann now take you through Ann and Brad's interpretation of everything we heard in repeated fashions. In other words, when we would meet with certain different groups, this, these themes kept coming through and keep coming through. So in this PowerPoint slide presentation tonight, we're going to see the themes that overarching across all the stakeholders that we talked to. So Ann, take it from there.
Let me speak very briefly about methodology. As you can see, we would tell groups and individuals that we're taking literal notes and we provided you with those literal notes. You can see them as part of the report. So we called through those notes and looked for repeated themes and that gave us what we will see here as strengths, challenges and characteristics. Before we finalize this, however, we wait for the results of the online survey. And one of the things that we saw here was great coherence. It was very reassuring and confirming that we saw that the online survey and the notes were not a perfect match, but very, very close. So then we are, we're more secure that this really was good feedback. It's, we, we've got a representative's, we've got representative information here. We put that into a narrative. You received a letter from us at the beginning of this report that puts all of this into a narrative. Tonight, I'm not going to go through that narrative. I am going to go through the outline, which are these power, this PowerPoint presentation. So methodology is listening, 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 taking notes, reviewing those notes, drawing some conclusions, confirming with the survey results, and then now presenting to you. The strengths I'll start with, so we're on the slide with strengths, correct? And, um, they are listed in alpha order, not in order of importance. So I, I am going to read them quickly so that we can all stay together and people that they're outside, uh, listening. They're seeing these for the first time. I, I'll comment briefly, but then at the end of the strengths, I'll stop and ask questions and discussion of strengths. Okay. Strengths, again, in alpha order. AP offerings for high schools. You all what? Large, high-performing districts in the state and perhaps the country and the number of AP offerings you have. Division-wide equity initiatives since 2018, you have a dedicated staff member and you have clearly defined equity initiatives district-wide. Dr. Atkins' leadership and long tenure needs to be corrected and celebrated. She is participants commented on her integrity, strength and character. Eliminating tracking is a strength for divisions to do, and you're taking it head-on. Expanding academic enrichment and advancement opportunities. Again, another initiative is in place and needs to be nurtured. Physical, physical support, fiscal support for schools. Um, something you're known for, and boy, do we see it in technology resources, salaries, class size and other resources provided for schools and students. Highly regarded principals. Um, right now I think you have a real treasure trove of leadership and you're anticipating a new principal and hopefully that person will be up to the same high standards as his, his, I think it is colleagues. Improved graduation rates for African-American students. That was a goal set and a goal achieved and a goal you need to be proud of. The Model STEM Program is just that, a model. Pre-K programs, you guys are, were well above the curve from other districts around the state. A renowned fine arts program, absolutely another treasure for this district. Resources, expertise in the area of mental health, social and emotional learning, trauma-informed care, wellness and health. Again, um, please, I, I know you're aware of this. This is extraordinary that you have these kind of wraparound services. Um, we've been working before the pandemic, but certainly in the pandemic. And right now with so much concern about student mental health and post-pandemic issues, um, you are ready to treat, to support your students and your staff, and we congratulate you for that. Staff work ethic. You have some hardworking people in this division from top to bottom. There is no bottom. From across the board, you have some hardworking people. And teacher quality. Heard stories about those exceptional teachers. The ones that have gone above and beyond, that are treasured and literally loved by members of the community and by students. And then technology to support student learning. Certainly you had your, um, your set of, of challenges in dealing with the pandemic. But right from the get-go, your students had the tools that they needed for learning virtually. And that is to, again, is a strength. So I'm going to stop there with strengths. Are there questions about strengths or comments? We'll go right on to challenges, concerns and issues. Um, and again, think that context, challenges, concerns and issues. Expanding equity work to include English language learners and their families as well as LGBTQ students. That was brought up repeatedly, that equity is, is abroad, includes many, uh, underrepresented groups of students and underserved groups of students and families. Um, developing and executing a CIP that addresses the elementary school, middle school reconfiguration and addresses renovations of existing facilities. I think that stands for, I think that's pretty, pretty clear. Um, and we'll get back to the reconfiguration in a minute. The growing English as a second language program, migrant and refugee families in the community. I'm not really sure. I, I was, I was given an insight this week in one of my follow-up phone calls, how much this program is really growing. I sort of had the impression there's some growth there. But whether it's growing or not, we heard from, we did not actually meet many language, second language families. But we met a number of advocates who wanted to make it clear that they felt that more attention needed to be, um, uh, made in this area. Hiring and retaining staff, especially teachers and administrators of color. Implementing the reconfiguration plan, not just in terms of the building, but in terms of creating a dynamic middle school. Lack of sufficient progress in closing gaps in student literacy and academic achievement. Need for increased parent engagement for students of color. Lack of staff collaboration that includes principals and teachers in planning and decision-making. Um, one of the things that we heard from practitioners pretty much across the board, not entirely, but pretty much across the board was that the resources available at the school level and the expertise was not tapped into sufficiently. And that sometimes it felt very top-down in this district. And you had many qualified and talented teachers who felt that their voices were not heard and sometimes ignored. Maintaining the commitment to ending tracking of students. We congratulate you on taking on this task. It needs to be completed. Providing career pathways that include quality, available career and technical ed programs. We did not do any kind of an assessment of your current program. But we heard from a number of people that this is an area that is going to need more attention. And we can tell you again, from working for many school districts that this is an area that all school districts are looking at right now. Career pathways need to be broadened. Respect for all kinds of work. I heard anecdotal stories that students, students who were defined as capable, who wished to take another pathway were discouraged. And again, we all want the best for every student and for every student to achieve his or her potential. For some students that may not be at least immediately a four-year college. There are many quality career and tech ed programs out there that can give students industry, industry certifications. And I know you already have some students that achieve in that area. But again, an area of challenge that I think you need to have on your radar screen at least. Um, resistance to change, innovation and new perspectives. A strategic plan that needs revision to include measurable benchmarks and defined outcomes. Everybody wants things to improve. Not everybody agrees on what that looks like and how that's going to be measured. Transitioning from having an SRO in the building to a new security plan. You made that decision. You made it in concert with the, um, city police department. That's a, a very positive thing, but there's still concern about this plan. And I think that that could be an immediate problem if that's not addressed. And the use of stimulus funds. It's obviously something that, um, school divisions are using now to get us past and, and go forward after the pandemic. Um, but you have present needs, but the future implications might be if you're using too much of it or any of it for staffing, is that going to be sustainable? And you need to work with your finance people to make sure that you're thinking that through as you may, as you use these funds.
Let me just, there's three, three areas I want to emphasize of what Ann said. People would take great glee in telling me that you've been studying the elementary school, middle school reconfigurations to 2011. I mean, I just couldn't have enough people tell me the date it started, how long you've been looking at it. So there is that aura out there for your community that this has been a long time coming. The lack of staff, uh, staff collaboration that includes principals and teachers. Principals were very, very emphatic that they want to be more involved and more uh, engaged in the process of decision-making and transparency and and getting information and even meeting with the superintendent and/or central staff. So there's a definite, um, work and challenge for the new superintendent to make sure that the, the principals are engaged and, and their voices are being heard and they know that their voices are being heard. Because sometimes voices are heard, but they don't always know it. And finally, I want to reemphasize, Ann, we are seeing this throughout the nation, uh, locally, nationally. Using, creating FTEs with COVID money is always scary because at some point COVID money will go away and then you're still left with the FTE. So if it's a program that was extremely worthwhile, then you've got to jiggle within the existing funds to react and sustain the FTEs if you put COVID money. FTEs work on its full-time equivalent positions. I'm an old HR guy, I'm sorry.
So discussion or questions about, um, challenges?
Ms. Furrier. Um, Ms. Monday, uh, you indicated in your challenges, I don't know how many down, growing English as a second, second language program, migrant and refugee families in the community. And you indicated that there were, um, several people that spoke on behalf of those communities. And in your strengths earlier, you indicated, um, that the surveys and information were available in various languages. Did you find that they were not accessed or people were not asking to have the surveys translated? Or did these families feel more comfortable in talking to you or me or someone else and having the person that they trusted express their concerns?
You know, it's hard for me to answer because I really don't know. I, I don't know the source. I don't know what these families were experiencing. The, what their advocates told me was that the whole issue of how to communicate with non-English speaking parents is one that is still a struggle. You need more translators. You need more languages. But just translating things is not enough because you have to have some outreach. And I think you're making, I know, this is not to say that there aren't some steps being, that have been taken and continue to be taken. But what we heard several times was this is a population whose needs were not yet meeting. And also in terms of academics, um, that sometimes some of these students are putting classes with teachers who are not well-trained to actually teach second language students or given the support that they need. So that whole area needs to be looked at. Um, and, and you are, you are, have, have accepted refugee families and that is a wonderful thing about this community. And I know there's a lot of supports, um, community supports for them as well, but it's an area that needs attention. Thank you.
So, um, I, I had a question or a comment really. Was there anything, um, of the challenges or concerns that surprised you about a district that said, you know, this is something that should be on top of the list of the next superintendent?
I'm going to say, I, I, you know, surprise is, is hard to, um, it's hard to surprise us, you know, look at our, look at us, we're, we're, we've seen everything. I, I think that you've had an interesting mix of, you've had strong leadership and consistent leadership and you've accomplished things. There's much to be proud of here. I was surprised to hear the issues of trust and transparency and collaboration. Um, and I think those are the things that are critical for success. And I, I, I kind of got, we got the message, kind of get, we got the message that maybe it's more in recent years that things have kind of broken down. But that's something that a new superintendent, if he or she wishes to be successful, is going to have to build trust and relationships the old-fashioned way. Visibility, talking to people, being available and being open. Those are the things that are necessary.
And Mr. Wade, I would also add that I'm always interested when. I'm always interested when we're talking to all these people, which direction will they push these desired characteristics? So I'm kind of foreshadowing what Ann's just about to talk about. But because of your reputation as a great school district and having accomplished, for instance, the African American graduation rate, just unprecedented in terms of what you did with that. I thought, well, maybe he's looking for a status quo person to just keep this district humming. My surprise was a lot of people and some uses phrase, which I heard more than once, which is we need a fresh set of eyes. So people, and there's the thing in here about change is hard. I think people want somebody, they're desiring somebody who can come in and say, this is good, this is good, this is good, but we need to change this, this and this. They really are looking for a fresh set of eyes. And somebody who can not only say, this is what we need, but somebody who can execute and get the change to take. Because you can say you need it, but to actually get to change, that's the hard part.
Before I begin characteristics on this whole issue of change, I would say overall, we heard that people were expecting a change agent. That's not surprising. If you've had somebody with a long tenure, of course you're going to look for change. That's just natural. When we've dealt with, with school districts where there's been a churn of superintendents, which is much more often, well, that is, that is now becoming the norm, unfortunately. When we deal with it, with a churn of superintendents, what do people want? Stability. They want a stabilizer. They, they've, they've, you know, they've had some different leadership perspective every three years. So to say, to say that somebody wants change does not mean that the past was bad. It means people are very open and expecting somebody to come in and address things differently and to have a new perspective. And that's what we heard.
Excuse me, could I just chime in on this one? Because I think this relates to a question I had about the, the one that was resistance to change, innovation, new perspectives. And I was actually surprised to see that one. And I'm wondering if you could elaborate a little more on flush that one out a little bit more.
I'm sure I can add to this, but I'll give you some specific examples. Because they're kind of a juxtaposition with each other. I had several people say, we chase a lot of shiny new objects. Whatever the latest shiny object is, that's the one we're going to fund and chase right now. What we really would like to do is make sure that any change we make is sustained as professional development behind it, has measurements that last, and then we prove the success of that program. So it's, what I'm saying is they'd rather have fewer initiatives that are well thought out, well measured, well metriced and, and stick with those rather than chase these shiny new objects. I think in some ways, maybe we should have said too much change. But at the same point, we felt the, we need to put that in there, but that perspective, but we'd rather do a few things really well that are really well proven and that we can measure and show success with, it's better than chasing a lot of new things.
And in addition, when I get into the next section on desired characteristics, I'll talk about instructional leadership. This one I heard from a number of teachers and again, more practitioners and parents. You have a wonderful, very traditional and very successful for some students academic program. There is some concern, however, that there's still too much emphasis on test results and on measuring learning in a very, very narrow way. And so there's a hunger for some looking at, and, and it's, and again, these are, these are issues around the educational world right now. How can we get out of this? How can we start looking at student learning in ways that measure problem solving? That may, that in ways that are more relevant for students. That actually in, in many ways provide more rigor for students. So that's the kinds of discussion that people would like to hear. You'll see in the notes, sometimes some people and kind of some sad comments about reducing kids to test scores. And looking at kids as test scores and, and this again, among students in some of the, what would be described, I guess, as lowest performing schools, they're not test scores. They're human beings that have the potential to think and solve problems and be creative. And they want to tap into that and to get into some of this practice.
Do you find that in most districts though? I mean, I'm seriously questioning because like, I feel like that's not a, a, a novel thing, like a many, like the dialogue is around, how do we balance the testing versus, you know, other things like letting children?
Yeah, I absolutely, this is the dilemma that people are in right now. There's some hope that post pandemic, because we kind of got away from that discussion. And now can we talk again about what does, what does achievement look like for all children? And, and how can we make certain that we are providing this kind of rigorous and relevant curriculum to all kids? That is not solely measured by SOL results. That is not a unique conversation in this district because of what we just talked about, about concern about whether people are talking across the levels to each other and whether there's honest conversations about practice.
Right.
And whether new ideas are welcomed, not always acted on, but at least listened to. I think in that context, this would also fall. Are we ready to look at desired characteristics? I want to add one other thing. You'll see in your many page report that there's an addendum. Brad met with the board of the NAACP and they asked to provide a written document that is part of the report. So that document is here. And they also included recommended characteristics. So those were also part of our consideration and I think you will see that in what we recommend here as well. So desired characteristics, I'm going to go through these and then we'll discuss. Budget and finance experience, critical, you know that. A communicator who can build relationships and trust in a diverse community. Box to everybody and relate to people across the board. Creates and retains a collaborative work environment where divergent perspectives are valued without fear of reprisal. Deeply committed to diversity, equity and inclusion, relentless in seeking improvement in this area. I don't think anybody sitting in this room disagrees with that one. An instructional leader who can guide, guide the system in development of more rigorous and relative, relevant, excuse me, instruction for all students. Knowledge of the unique aspects and needs of middle schools. One of the things that we hope, and I know you hope as well, and we will certainly in our screening, although we will not say if you're not a middle school person, you would not be recommended, but we are going to talk about the, with them about the reconfiguration. The reconfiguration, as you guys know, is more than about a building. There has to be a philosophy around middle school education and middle school learners that goes with it. And that's an opportunity for somebody to really lead in that area and create a model middle school for this division. Political skills to navigate successfully in a diverse activist community. You told us this was an activist community. You are right. We believe you. We believe you. Yes. Strong and confident enough to deal with conflict and make tough decisions. This is not a job for someone who cannot take, who, who cannot understand that they are going to be criticized. Transparent and open. Understands the need for career pathways that include quality career and technical education. Visible in school, schools and the community.
There isn't a person who told, didn't tell me that. And it even extended into the central office. There's a huge hunger that the superintendent and the central office staff. Some people put it very bluntly, they need to live in the community. But others said, we just need to see them, especially the superintendent. So this, this, if I had to say one overarching thing, this is probably the one I heard the most.
And then finally visionary. Optimistic about the future of public schools. I didn't put the word inspirational there. I think I used it someplace else, but you know, we are all hungry for inspiration and you, we will hopefully bring you people that can do the job. And not maybe in a flashy way, but through their, their dedication to the work of this, this division. Their integrity, honesty and effort can be inspirational and can inspire others. I asked one of the highest leaders in your political organization, not in the schools, I will not say who I spoke to. But I asked if they really believed that things could change. And that's a hard question and it was hard for this person to answer. And I think, you know, all of us in education right now have to really say, do we really believe that things can change? And I would hope that we would select, well, we will ask people that question. Do you believe that things can change? Will you be an optimistic, forward thinking leader in public schools in a time when public schools have been derided pretty much and a lot of people have lost confidence in them? So that's what we hope for.
So I just want to tag on tonight and I agree, I think that that is an excellent question. And so as you all are looking for candidates and determining which one, would you all be looking for someone that has proven, you know, that they are willing to make that change and believe in that change or one that has a really strong vision and can show how they can do it? Or maybe they've done it, but not at that level?
We absolutely want demonstratable evidence. In other words, don't just tell me you believe this. Don't tell me you have a vision for this. Tell me, show me what you've done. You know, and we want, I'd like to see some metrics, even supply me with the metrics to prove that you actually engaged that change or were part of a team that engaged that change. Because everybody talks a good game, especially in an interview process. But seeing the evidence of they actually moved the scores, you know, that's, that's a whole nother thing.
So Madam Chair, I have one quick follow up to that. So I mean, these characteristics are really something that can't be measured, you know, so how are you going to, I mean, the political skills, it's, it's, it's very unique here in Charlottesville. And so how are you going to like measure someone political, I mean, all of these really, how, how are you going to?
For sitting superintendents, it's to see how complex is their community, what is their political environment and how well have they maneuvered that? Some of that comes back to social media, unfortunately, right now. You can, you can kind of tell how a sitting superintendent is doing based by the volume of social media. For assistant superintendents, deputies and associates, a little harder in an interview process. Excuse me, we'll ask them, tell us about a tough time that you had either in a political decision or something you had to advocate for a child and push forward. And then we'll verify that through a reference check or something to see if that really did happen the way they told us. So we really do go after again, demonstratable evidence wherever we can. Everybody talks about walking the walk and being visible in schools. We actually ask people in their setting, are they a person who gets out of their office or are they in schools? I mean, we really will probe most of these for demonstratable evidence. And you're right, are there hard metrics we can tick off? No, but we've got to do the best we can to make a match.
I just, this sounds like a unicorn, so I'm very concerned about kind of people who can talk a big game. And I think so many politicians and leaders are really, and I'm fine with leaders who can delegate and who have strong skills in, in collaboration, but like kind of the vacuous leader, valueless leader. I mean, this is something that I'm very concerned about. This community might attract at this point. And so I want to make sure that those folks do not apply.
As do we. And, and clearly, yes, this is a unicorn. Yes, this is, this is, oh my gosh. You know, this is, this is the ideal. But we also use this document and this information with the candidates. We will tell them, if you, we don't just want you to get the job, we want you to be able to do the job. If you get there, you're going to need to have very strong political skills to navigate successfully in a diverse activist community. Is that, how would you, how would you deal with some of these kinds of issues? So no person is going to have all of these skills at the same levels. We all have strengths and weaknesses, all of us do. But this is what we called out of what we were told both in the interviews and on the surveys. These are the characteristics that are most needed for success. And we will look to find somebody who most matches this. And one other thing in terms of the kind of person, yes, of course, we want not just talk, we want people who have demonstratable success. But Brad mentioned, well, we already have a number of sitting superintendents who have either applied or expressed interest. And that gives you some, it's easier to measure success with sitting superintendents. But we also are open to those people who have great promise. They still have to have some measures of success, but great promise. Because sometimes those people actually can deliver more for different reasons. So it's, it's, it's not a one size fits all. We will bring you a diverse pool of candidates and then you will get to know these people.
I just think humility is also really important. I mean, it's, I mean, I think one of the things that, that transparency requires honesty. And so that's where I think that, that's what I think many of the characteristics kind of point to is kind of humility about working together and being honest about their. And so anybody, I just really appreciate anybody who can have hard conversations about where their weaknesses are.
I love your word vacuous. I just, it's better than unicorn, actually. And, and so I think Ann and I will be screening hard for no vacuous. But the nice thing about this is, and Mr. Wade, this enters into your question too. We want you to spend a lot of time with the candidates. You finally will decide. So we will have done our check, but you should ask them every tough question you can. You should ask them to demonstrate, you should ask them to bring you materials, you can give them situational problems. I mean, we will help you with that to make sure that at the end of the day, we are all assured that you're making a good choice. And the reference checking that you guys will do personally on these people, that's going to help you with some confidence too. So there's a process ahead. We think we can make that work. Any other questions at this point?
I'm concerned about platitudes. It's an interview. People will say and do what they need to do and say. And often you cannot always see through that. And we do a lot of talking around the table about transparency and being your authentic self and all of the buzzwords. I'm tired of buzzwords. But how do you, I know there's a matrix that you will use out of your larger corporate office. Because there'll be some people that will automatically be eliminated because of various reasons.
Well, you're right. I mean, the ones that like Ann and I were discussing some of the names we were talking about on the way down. And we had one of the perennial pliers, a person's applied for every position we've ever seen in our life, you know, so. Yeah, thank you. And, but the, the rest is something that we really engage in, to your point. I mean, I have a couple of strengths in life and they all are my horrible weaknesses. I, I value honesty and lack of tact. And lack of tact has gotten me in a lot of problems, but if, you know, I've, I've had people come to interviews and I'll say, and it's the old police department approach where if, if they ask you the question, they already know the answer. So sometimes I'll ask a candidate, can you tell me about this situation? Because I've already done a lot of research and I want to see how they answer the question that I already know the answer to. And you know, about 90% of the time, I get very close to my version of what my question is, what I think the answer is. But there's 10% of the time, people just start lying to me. And I shut down the, I don't tell them that you're lying to me, but we're not moving on, you know, we're just not going to move on. So I, we do have a methodology to, to get at because, and that's why we even like to sit with you during that first round of interviews, because we've done the screening interview. And we want to be sure that we're seeing consistency in answers, that things didn't change, that we're not hearing some other version or, you know, because you're right, the performance in an interview, that is one skill. That's a nice skill to have and it gets you through the interview process. That's not the skill you need to be a superintendent. That's not the skill you need to be a superintendent. The skill you need to be a superintendent is different than your interview skill. So we really want to cut through.
Okay, because you know, the words of the day are diversity, equity and inclusion.
Oh.
And.
Magnify, yeah.
Just because you have a diverse pool does not mean that people are included. And so there are certain things, when I hear those words as an administrator, that I look for personally. And when they are thrown out, because they will be thrown out in the conversation.
We will hear it a lot.
Um, there will be certain things that I um am looking for and I um. I have to say to you as an African-American female administrator. I understand those three words. But they often have different meanings for me because of who I am and what I do. And so when those things come up, I look at them through a different lens. It is not to say that you and Ann do not. But there are just certain things that are um inherent for me that I am extremely uh concerned about in this process.
And that's why when you get to see the applicants for an extended period of time, you need to develop that. Thread of what does equity mean to that person in your lens, in your coloration of that. Absolutely. That's why it's so important. Um. All right, I'm going to move on to the executives, uh, the online survey executive summary. And these are highlights. This is like another fifteen-page report that we also will post online tomorrow and you already have it. But this is from all the respondents of the online survey. Um, this is something we use nationally and so we can even. Tell how you're doing compared to other districts and stuff like that. But more importantly, it's how you, how this is consistent with what we heard verbally. They have these uh broad themes called teaching and learning, management, uh, vision and values and community engagement. So you'll see like a TL or. An M or a VB or a CE, that's what that stands for. Those are four broad areas. So sometimes. Surveys will show everybody is concerned about teaching and learning. Sometimes they're all concerned about vision and values. You actually have a nice mix in all of your areas here and I'll talk about that. So on page nine of the PowerPoint, we have. What are the strengths perceived by the people who responded to this survey? And look at the first one, it's fascinating and pandemical really tests this one. Technology is integrated into the classroom teaching and learning. That's your strongest one. But look at the second one, that's a nice one they have too. I can't complain about either one of those. District schools are safe. And the third one is about management. Some people never see this one in their strengths. Uh, the division employs effective teachers, administrators and support staff in its schools. That speaks again to the quality of this district. Um, vision and values on the fourth one there, the district's working to close achievement and opportunity gaps. And finally. A fifth strength one in, in community engagement, the district engages with diverse racial, cultural and socioeconomic groups. Those are great. Top five to have and seen as strengths. And again, I think you can be very proud of that. Now let's see. What characteristics your online people want? Well, coming back to that trust and transparency, there it is at the top. Community engagement, but also I think it goes beyond that to your teachers, students and everybody. A positive professional climate of mutual trust and respect amongst faculty, staff and administrators. Again, we put that into the concerns and challenges. We put into desired characteristics. Here it is again showing up in your online respondents. Um, second, teaching and learning, understanding, be sensitive to the needs of the diverse student population. So even though. You have progressed so far and made so much progress with that, it's still a concern or desired characteristic. The culture of high expectations for all students and personnel, vision and values. Here comes back retaining, recruiting, employing, developing uh your staff. And of course, uh, a nice one also is a clear compelling vision for the future. I find this next page very interesting. It's too small on the PowerPoint. You can't read. You almost have to go to a page like this. This asks the top four and it's grouped by what did the administrators think were their top four? What did the community members think were their top four? What did the parents, the students, the support staff and the teachers? Or do you have agreement on the first two? You have sixty percent of the people in all these groups said foster that positive professional climate. Sixty percent of the people. Said they want that transparent, respect, collaboration, that's what they want. And second one, forty-eight percent, again, all these groups said this was in their top two, the sensitive to the needs of the student population. Now, when we get into the next couple of categories, we start to split off. Administrators and parents want high expectations for all students. Then we get to um, the parents want great staff, recruiting, employing and retaining effective personnel. And teachers want that too. Uh, interesting administrators, community members and students want a clear and compelling vision for the future. I found students ranking that third is really, really interesting. I don't see that very often. Um, and then transparent, uh, deep understanding of educational research and emerging best practices, that was community and students. And finally, support staff and teachers came in with transparent communication and be visible and throughout the district and actively engaged in life. I'm surprised visible is that low on this one. I think it's because the other choices were more important to them because again. Nobody stopped to ever not say to me, be visible throughout the district. But wide congruence on the first two and a little bit of split. Look at the ones that don't make it. Sometimes that's interesting, like down at the bottom. Guidance for district-wide curriculum instruction, you're doing a great job, obviously. Day-to-day operations, again, not important or in the top four for anybody.
She was so strong at that in the past, so we just, that's like an assumed, like the founding, we already have that.
But in some districts, we'll see, those are the top two, you know, so it's fascinating how it arranges itself in this, in this thing. Take a look at that. I think that's very interesting. I also encourage you. The public too, the public who's listening, read all thirty-four pages. I mean, we've given you a, a real synopsis of the comments and did some broad categorizations. But when you see the actual comments made by a lot of people, whether they be teachers, administrators, community members, et cetera. They're powerful messages, so please do take the time to read that. The last two pages are really a reiteration of the ones that Ann just went through for desired characteristics. There's absolutely nothing different on page twelve. On page thirteen, um, certified as a Virginia superintendent, obviously extremely important, increasing track record, demonstratable track record of. Responsibilities and success. Um, experience for in success and proving, and we want that to be demonstratable outcomes for students of color. Experience as a superintendent or cabinet-level leader in diverse community and doctor preferred. So that's the essence of this report. It was, we put it together. I think Ann did a great job. I think we all did a great job in getting this together for you very fast. Because we wanted to get this out on your website because one of our most, most interesting screening questions, Ms. Purrier is. Uh, can you, what do you know about Charlottesville? And if they don't reference that, I've seen the leadership profile report. I will admit that we sometimes prompt them and say, have you seen the leadership profile report? And if the answer is no, they're moving down in our list of, you're not doing too well in this interview. Because we, we, we want them to read this and, and actually see how their leadership could fit into this type of setting. So. Questions for either Ann or I or comments?
Um, I just have a comment that, you know, you talked to a lot of people in the communities, a small community, and I just heard great things about your interviewing. Techniques and it was very well received, so thank you for this thorough.
And, and I will take this opportunity to say, we really like you. You have very different, we, um, we heard very different things and some things were not easy to hear. But you're good people, you're good people and, and every person treated us respectfully. And even if they were saying some hard things, um, there was a respectful attitude.
But there is a.
However.
I want to reemphasize, remember what I'm saying is number one is transparent and collaboration. I think we had more requests in this division than in many we've learned. For private conversations because they did not want to say comments in front of other people. So that's a very, you know, you asked me about surprise, that's a little bit of a surprise. I will also say, I want to go back to her liking everybody. I had, I had a meeting with the most ecstatic community member who had just won a primary. And that person was just so happy that morning that he almost could not think about anything.
We are very grateful.
I, I do, I want to extend my gratitude to you both and, and I know there was a couple of situations um. Where there were requests to speak with you and you both were just so gracious and available. So I thank you for that and. Taking it a step further, there was, you know, um, questions about whether certain people, you know, received invites or were, were not included. In, in different groups and um you both were very um willing to reach out and, and receive um. You know, input from them even after we had closed, um, you know, the dates down. So thank you for that.
Also, um, Brad and Ann, I thank you all for giving us this uh abbreviated version of the report tonight. Honored to the board, but to the public. Um, I am not running for superintendent, but I did read the thirty-five page report.
Yeah.
Any other questions, concerns from anybody?
I'm concerned that it's only six twenty and we might be done. I'm just kidding.
Easy, easy now.
That is a strength. Thank you, Dr. Cough, good point.
Um, so just, uh, this really wasn't written here, but um. At this point, just so we can maybe do this publicly, is, is an opportunity for you all to just continue to receive applications. Um, so we really don't, unless we have questions for you or you have questions for us, you know, you, you know how to contact us, but. Um, we won't really meet again until you come back and provide us with your tiered.
Yeah, and I hope to give the board a, a very generic update. Probably about every two, two and a half weeks, just in terms of where we are in terms of the pool and stuff like that. It's not going to be very specific. But I, I don't want you to feel like there's a huge void. I'll tell you the actions we're taking and people we're dragging down and stuff like that, so I will give you an update. Uh, I think we had thirty-six or something like that and we probably have another twenty-nine percent, so we feel very good.
So the next time we meet and talk about this publicly is August third?
Uh, it will not be a public meeting because that.
Oh, I'm sorry, August fourth.
That night, we're developing the questions for your first interview. And you're seeing the entire slate of candidates with our recommendations. You'll decide who uh you want to bring back for interviews. And then I know Ms. Torres and I have talked, uh, you have the task of putting together a community committee confidential. And that will happen on August thirteenth is the current plan. And I asked that if you could name that committee by, let's say, mid-July or end of July. Uh, Miss Monday and I could have a Zoom meeting with them to prep them for how that will go and get them ready for the confidentiality issue with that.
So the meeting, that confidential meeting, we don't have a date for that yet or for the community.
Committee is uh August thirteenth.
Okay, so yeah, what I would like to do is ask board members if you have um. Two or three people.
But could you, before you do that, could you have Brad?
Speak up.
Before you do that, Madam Chair, could you please have Brad explain to the listeners? And it will be recorded exactly. Verbatim, punctuate them what you mean by confidential committee member.
The board will be seeing a first round of candidates and if those are satisfactory. They plan to send some candidates, and we don't know the number until that day of decision is here, to a community panel. Because we will have a lot of sitting superintendents who will want to try for this position because it's a challenge to them. But will not want to reveal to their existing community that they're trying for Charlottesville until they see how far they get. That this committee will have to create a aura of confidence and confidentiality around it. And we will actually have you sign statements that'll be very specific. For instance, you cannot reveal other members of the committee. You cannot reveal who you met with. And this is not just during August thirteenth, this is in perpetuity. Because let's pretend there's A candidate, B candidate and C candidate. A candidate gets it. We do not want a community member panel, three weeks after you have your new superintendent name, talking about the B and C candidates. Because that absolutely violates all the confidentiality of protecting who else applied for the position. So they will be signing a statement, um, and we've had very good luck with this because we do really emphasize. You will hurt the students of Charlottesville if you scare away some of these great applicants because you can't keep confidentiality. This applies to the board, it applies to this community committee, and I, Ann and I will be emphasizing this over and over. But yes, if you're volunteering for this community, you need two criteria. One, you can be present, probably, it's probably going to be a physically present on August thirteenth for most of the day. It will take us an entire day to do this process. And two, you have no problems with confidentiality. And that includes social media. I just had a member who I had to caution and send him their signed statement to confidentiality. Because they said they can't wait to see who the actual superintendent is because they served on the committee. Now, they didn't name another member, they didn't name who they had interviewed, but they certainly violated the thing they had just signed. And I had to say. You just went over the line and put on social media that you were a member of the search committee. So don't do that again, so. Ms. Purrier, did I meet your expectation?
You met my expectations. Now, the question is, as a former administrator, if everyone was listening to your direction.
So it's all about repetition, right?
Yes.
Any other questions before I proceed? So regarding this, this confidential um community committee that we're going to. Put together, I would like to ask um each board member if you're interested to submit two or three names. Um, we'll figure out how we're going to do this. Um, we are looking at, your recommendation was about fourteen. So I, I would hope that we can reach out to a, a variety of people in different settings throughout the community that. Okay, so staff, I mean, is there any group that we should steer away from? Yeah, school board members on that, yeah, on that, we'll, we'll have our shot.
Yeah, you'll have your own time. No, this should be as economical as you can make it. Uh, one group should not predominate. I mean, a, a community member should not show up and see thirteen staff members, nor should. Um, a staff member be the only one with thirteen community members, you know, try and even it out, make sure. Think of all the people who would say they want to have a voice in this and then figure out the best representative who would bring that part to the table. The danger in you each nominate, the danger, no, it's a huge, this is a huge issue. This is actually huge. The issue is, if Mr. Wade brings two people, Ms. McKeever, Ms. Purrier, you know. And you all are picking people who represent the same groups, you need to go back to the drawing board because you need a broader swath of it. So. Yeah, you're going to need some, this is actually a little bit of a struggle. It is a, it's a hard, challenging board assignment. Good luck.
Thank you. I'll take that on. Um, and I'll reach out to you all individually and we can kind of talk about interests and groups that we might be reaching out to.
Now, it'll be a large group, structured interview, all fourteen will be sitting in a room. And they'll spend about an hour and a half with each candidate, asking probably about thirteen questions of them. And then at, as each candidate leaves, I go around the room and say, Mr. Wade, what was the strength? Ms. McKeever, what was the strength? And I, at that, now I'm going to go back. Mr. Wade, what was the concern? Ms. McKeever, what was the concern? And we're going to provide the board with those issues so that as you go into your final interview, let's pretend you like candidate A. You're going to look at the issues and make sure all your subsequent questions and conversations are going to be clearing up issues that the community has brought forward. Okay?
So we'll have to be repeated again and again. Um, you select the superintendent. You, that is the work of the school board and the sole responsibility of the school board. We do not, and this committee will not. This committee will advise you and it'll advise you. In a very structured and clear way, that is the same for each candidate. Um, but we will not have a consensus from that group. They will not vote. That's not appropriate. They are there to advise you so that you can make this decision. You're going to have information that they don't have. First of all, you've had a, you've seen all of their background. They'll also see their resumes and that's kind of thing. You're also going to be calling references and then you're going to spend a day with each candidate. You're going to have different experiences and more information. So I will say again, they do not, no one picks the superintendent. Except for the seven people on the school board. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? We appreciate you both. Thank you. Be safe.
Safe travels, yes.
Okay, um, we are moving on to um board response to written reports. Any questions, concerns about this?
Good job.
Thank you for the report.
Yes.
And we will have an update, um, I believe in August, more comprehensive update on that. Um, and we are now moving to our second opportunity for comments from members of the community. Again, anybody here in the, in, um, the audience is welcome to, to step up and make comment if you would like. Um, and/or if there's anybody registered, um, on the Zoom meeting or the Zoom platform, um, please state your name and you're limited to three minutes. And I don't know if, don't, does not appear that we have anybody in the Zoom room, we'll give it just a couple more seconds. All right. We are going to, um, close comments from members of the community. Was there a question? I don't, I can't hear you.
Are we going to do the Kim Howell new safety model update? Oh, I didn't know. Okay.
If you have any questions about it, that, we, we just finished that. So if you have any questions or concerns like that, would, do you want to, do you have any thoughts about it?
No, I was just wondering if we usually do something, like presentation or something.
Thank you. So I, at this point in time, I had just, I had felt comfortable with her providing, it's just a quick written report and update and have asked if they come back in August with a more comprehensive, um, presentation to the board. All right, thank you, and we are moving on to comments from the board. And I will start with Dr. Craft, so I do not forget you. Appreciate you zooming in.
Yeah, well, um, I am just struck with, you know, the solemn task before us in, um, really finding the right person to lead our division. And, um, I, you know, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this. Um, and, uh, we have a lot more work, work ahead. But it's really probably the most important thing that our board is tasked to do. And, uh, yeah, so I'm, um, very aware of that at the moment and look forward to, uh, getting, you know, getting, getting that process underway um, in terms of candidates and, uh, the community committee, I think is really important. The confidentiality, I also agree, is super, super important for that. So, um, that's really all I have right now. I think that, um, we're working on so many things at this point in time that are really big and really important for our division, both now and in the future. And, uh, you know, I think it's, it's just a, a uniquely important, um, time for us all. So I'm looking forward to having a little bit of a break, and I imagine other people are too, and then just diving right back into it.
Thank you. Tonight, I will start, I believe, from my left. So, Ms. Shandra, do you have any comments?
Um, I do not have any comments.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Very brief, as I said earlier, um, this, um, document has set the tone as we move forward in seeking a new superintendent. I spent all day yesterday reading this and very interesting, the comments from various members of our community. And they will get a chance tomorrow to see this, based on the website. So I would encourage everybody to read this document. You can do it.
Thank you. Ms. Mia Purrier?
Ms. Lisa Torres? I too read the document. Probably took me a little longer than most people because I was dividing my time and making sure that I gave it the attention that it needed. Before I got on the school board, I had friends in other localities that are and or were school board members. And they shared with me exactly what Ms. Monday said. Your job is to hire a superintendent, if ever that happens. Uh, address budget and policy issues. Like they said, the most important thing was the hiring of a superintendent if you're ever put in that position. So we are put in that position. I think that we are poised to select someone that will be able to take our school division to the next level. I think an advantage that we have is none of us have ever done this before. And I think we're going to do more than our due diligence to make sure that we get it right. And, um, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. McKeever?
I have no comments.
Shocker. Mr. Wade? No comments, oh my goodness. Is there a baseball game going on or something?
Swim me, swim me, swim me.
Or swim me. Thank you, everybody, um, for, for all that you do. I, I was actually sitting here, um, listening, appreciating all of your comments and reflecting back to, um, when Dr. Atkins, um, approached us and, and shared that she, um, was moving on and, and just that first few days of what that felt like. And as Ms. Purrier said, you know, that realization that none of us had done this and gone through this process. And so as we, you know, I don't know what you all were doing, but as I was scrambling, um, within, you know, my head and, and, um, within, you know, and amongst other people to, to kind of get a grasp of, of what this was going to feel like. It, it was very overwhelming, um, there for a few days. And, and we kind of eased into it and I think got into a flow. And, um, I really was a little surprised that I, I felt a sense of, of peace tonight, listening to them and knowing the work. You know, as they laid out what they would do and how they would engage with the community and bringing to us, you know, all of the comments, um, in the form that they did and making it available. I mean, it's just like things are falling into place. And, um, yes, there is still some tough work ahead of us. But I feel like we're in good hands and, and we are moving forward, so that, that was a nice feeling to have, sitting here tonight. Um, also, um, wanted to acknowledge and, and thank, you know, parents again who send emails and ask questions. Um, I, I think there were some, some good questions in an email that came in this week just regarding, you know, a change in our practices as, as they look to enroll their young student into our schools and, and wanting to have a better understanding of what, what's that going to look like? You know, what will the classroom look like? What will masking policies look like? What will, you know, distancing, interaction, instruction, all of that? And we're really great questions. And, um, so, you know, I just wanted to remind everybody that, that we as a board are following a policy that was in response to the, um, state of emergency that was enacted by the governor last year. Um, and as everybody knows, I mean, and, and there was a policy that we enacted and put in place that, that spells out very clearly, um, masking expectations and how we kind of survived and got through this year. So thank you to everybody who was part of that, to the COVID committee, who worked really hard to kind of help form that in our practices. And then we've adapted that as, as guidance has changed. But we are really working under, um, again, guidance or, you know, because that state of emergency was there and then guidance from VDOE and the CDC. Well, that state of emergency is set to expire at the end of this month. And, um, after that happens, you know, we need to wait and see a little bit about, um, any legislation that might affect masks and also wait to hear and see, um, if there's guidance that comes down from, from the governor and, and the State Board of Education, VDOE and CDC. And we as a board and, and Mr. Henderson and staff and everybody will receive all of that information and come together and, and, um, you know, and have discussions and, and make policies based on where we are, um, as we get closer to the return to school. So I know that's not maybe concrete answers, but there's still some question marks out there. Um, so I do want to just remind everybody, um, you know, to be safe and, and be healthy and be well. And, and I do want to put in a plug, if I may, for Blue Ridge Health District. Um, I am a healthcare provider and I just found out this week, um, and I deal with people who are homebound, which means it's really taxing for them to get out. And, and although some can get out for medical appointments, there are some who just, i- it is near impossible for them to leave their home. And so I reached out to, um, the health district and made a phone call. And they are able, and they are actually, um, working with, um, the fire department and local EMS who will go to people's homes and provide vaccines. And I did not know that. So I, and, and we did, I sat right there, I opened up my phone, we called. She got a phone call, um, that evening and has their first vaccine. And, um, I just felt like that was great to know and it's great to share out for those, if anybody has anybody that, um, still needs, you know, and can't get to one of those locations to receive a vaccine. So with that being said, I will, um, wrap up my comments and hand it over to Mr. Henderson and ask if you have any comments.
Just an update, um, several days ago, we received information from VDOE in terms of our buildings and, um, what can be eliminated regarding, um, procedures that have been put in place and, um, previously. And that is mask wearing. Our buildings who are, that are not serving students, employees do not need to wear a mask, nor do they need to follow the space restrictions. If a employee is not vaccinated, he or she must wear a mask at all times. And if our employees are in buildings that are serving children, they must wear masks and follow the, uh, space restrictions. So right now, we'll have a few elementary schools that are not serving summer school. And we'll have only a few employees in those buildings, uh, because it's a lot of construction going on. Those employees will not need to follow mask and distance specifications as well as the building, um, division office as well as the edX, unless they're, we're beginning to receive preschool, preschool children and then they will have to wear masks. So, um, that just changed, um, four or five days, coming from the VDOE and recommendation from the CDC. We're still waiting, uh, once the, um, we hear from the governor after June thirtieth, I'm sure there will be additional, um, information coming to us as we prepare for the opening of school. Other than that, I have no other comments.
Thank you. Um, and now we're on to work session wrap-up. If Dr. Baptist is still with us.
Yes, ma'am. We only had one item, and that was to make sure that in the application for the return to learn that, um, there was a question that if anyone needed additional help with their, uh, virtual learning, to let us know. That was the one item.
If we can target that to our K through two families, that would be great.
Okay.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, and we are on to upcoming meetings, which I think pushes out to August. And, uh, August fifth. Five PM, and we will be back in the media center. So we will be back to our normally scheduled time and location. So with that being said, I am, I am going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody.